Good evening, I would like to call this May Bryan Board of Education meeting to order. We will start with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rob, roll call please.
Scott Benedict, here.
Cindy Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingvai. Deb Updike.
Here.
Mike Stockman.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start off by accepting a motion to approve the April meeting and the special meeting on April 30th for the board unless there's some changes. Does anybody have any, notice anything that needs to change?
I may be accept those.
Thank you, Deb. Take a second.
Second.
Thank you Scott.
Cindy.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm not aware of any public participation, so we will move on to the communications part of the Fore County School Board, which that would be me. So, pretty exciting here at the end of the year. Tomorrow, 415 seniors will receive their certificate of completion in their chosen career fields from Fore County. With 54, I hope I counted right, I did that if I'm wrong, of those students being from Bryan High School. We'd like to congratulate these students and look forward to seeing them at our graduation ceremony on June 10th. Fore County is excited to be the recipient of a grand total of $35,000 towards the purchase of two new robots for their smart labs. Pretty exciting. That $35,000 is a grant that's coming through the Bryan Area Foundation. And they will be used for multiple programs, the two robots. One is a Fanic and one is a DTC, which will be used for welding. Please do not ask me what the Fanic does. I do not know. All I know is the school had to come up with matching funds and is very excited about having these brand-new robots in the school. And then one last other item on my list, which is very, very exciting. The BPA Clubs of America, Business and Professional of America, held their national competition in Dallas recently. Two students from Fore County made it to the top 10 to be able to compete. And our very own student from Bryan, Cory Hemingway, placed fifth in the nation. Very exciting. Cory is in Mr. Ricketts Networking Administration and Cyber Security Program. Cory placed fifth in the nation in the Network Administration using Microsoft Competition. So, fifth in the nation, that's great. Congratulations to Cory. Very, very cool. That's my report. We will move on to the treasures report now. Rob?
Okay, thank you. We'll look briefly at our financial reports for the month ended April 30th. Our cash reconciliation report. Deposits at Farmers and Merchant State Bank totaled $6,123,446. Outstanding checks and adjustments, $68,312. Deposits at Starr Ohio, $3,298,684. At Morgan Stanley, $4,881,76. And at State Bank, $6,215,270. Petty cash and change funds totaled $7,150. Our total funds on hand at the end of April, $20,457,314. Of those funds, our general fund balance was $14,791,76. Our bond retirement fund, $1,434,815. Permanent improvement fund, $2,518,600. And our construction funds, as we near the end of the project, they're getting smaller. Our LFI funds total $54,699. And our local share funds total $645,685. Any questions on those reports? Since I'm going to review the five-year forecast, I'm going to skip the SM2 report this month. It's really not significant. Amended appropriations. Our appropriation total at the end of April totaled $38,116,168. Our changes during the month included an increase to principal fund of $4,150. Classroom Facility Maintenance Fund, the O-34 Fund of $3,700. District Managed Activity Funds were increased by $23,935. PI Funds were increased by $234,342. Most of that was our bus purchase that we approved last month. And Student Activity Funds, $24,342. Increases during the month totaled $290,130. Any questions on the appropriation changes? If not, we have a couple of contracts to approve. Three-year contract with Healthcare Process Consultants. We'll pay them $11,000 a year. They're the firm that helps us with all of our Medicaid filing. We ask for your authorization to purchase bleachers at the elementary gymnasium from Farnham Equipment Company. We approved the bidding process last month and the bid from Farnham through state purchasing came through at $79,800. Any questions on those items?
I'm looking forward to having new bleachers, just for the security factor if nothing else, going up and down them.
It will be nice. Next, we'll look at our five-year forecast. Each year in May and October, the Ohio Department of Education requires us to update a five-year financial plan for the school district. As we look at fiscal year 2018, our real estate tax totals, line 1.01, totaled $6,852,000. That came in a little bit ahead of budget. We believe that there was a significant amount of taxpayers who paid their entire tax bill in the first half of the year due to the federal income tax law changes. And we saw about $230,000 more in that first half settlement than what we were anticipating. So, as a result of that, you'll see the fiscal year 19 estimate has been reduced to 6.4 million because that second-half collection in this calendar year will be the first collection in next fiscal year. So, we're going to short, it'll be short because we received the funds already this year. Any questions on that? I know it's a little confusing. Income tax, our school district income tax came in at $3,150,000. That's $50,000 over budget and $50,000 increase over last year as well. It's about 1.6%. The fiscal year 19 through 2022 estimates reflect a 1% increase per year as we move from left to right on the school district income tax line there on the five-year forecast. Unrestricted grants and aides, this is our state foundation money that we receive from the state. This year, we received about a 3% increase from the state above last year. And next year, we will receive another 3% above this year, which is about $216,000. Going out to fiscal year 2021 and '22, then I do not show any increases above the fiscal year 19 estimates. Fiscal year 19 is the second year of the biennial budget, so that's the last year we actually know what we are getting. This biennial budget, they provide us a pretty good snapshot of what we receive each year. Property tax allocation, this is the line that includes the homestead exemptions, the rollbacks, as well as the tangible personal property replacement money. As we've explained before, TPP replacement money is going to be eliminated. So, it's being phased out over the next five years. And we see about a $200,000 reduction in those revenues per year. So, as you look from left to right, you'll see that our estimate for fiscal year 18 is $1,705,000. That drops down to $1,498 in fiscal year 19 and so on as we move left to right on the five-year forecast. All other revenue, $1,623,000 for this year. So, our total revenues for fiscal year 18 are estimated to be $21,160,000. Our operating expenses, personal services, as well as employee retirement and insurance benefits, make up 80-some percent of our budget. This year, our personnel services are estimated to be $12.3 million. That's up about $245,000 from last year, about 2%. This year, we're back on a 26 pay cycle. Last year's cycle was a 27 pay cycle in that fiscal year. Our personal services, personnel services numbers reflect the actual budgets that I put together based upon our current employees and staffing as they move through the employees' payment schedules, based upon their years of service and so forth, and our current labor contracts. Employee retirement and benefits, once again, that's insurance as well as retirement money based upon the wages and the labor contracts. We see some increases there as we move out into the forecast as well. Supplies and materials, this year, we're about $528,000 right now is our appropriations. There's some items in there. I know that there's one item that we will not be spending and there's probably some cushion in that line. There always is at the end of the year. Money coming back when we close the purchase orders and other objects, $274,000. And expenses this year, that 1% increase is built in the forecast as we move through fiscal year 19 through '22. So, our estimated expenses at the end of this year, $21,272,000. Our deficit of $111,764. Once again, I don't believe that we will spend all the appropriated money we have in those expenditure lines. And I do anticipate it'll probably finish in the black this year. But what I give you here is a worst-case scenario based upon our current appropriations. So, as we move out in future fiscal years, you can see the deficit spending projected of $1,329,000 in fiscal year 19, $2,095,000 in fiscal year '20, and so on. It's very hard to project once we get out past that second year. But this provides you some trending based upon where we stand today with our current staffing, our current expenses. So, one thing we have to, we have to keep in mind is we have to watch, we always have to watch what we do because it's always tight. Whenever you expand, it builds upon itself. So, this also, this forecast also includes $100,000 in expense for security that we're building in in future years. Depending upon, I know that the board has not decided what direction we're going, but we wanted to put something in the forecast for those expenses as we felt that the board would probably take some kind of action to do something in the district. So, that includes $100,000 per year. Could be more, could be less, depending upon what we, what our plan comes up. So, at the end of this fiscal year, our projected general fund balance is $12,341,000. By the end of the five-year forecast, that dwindles down to $2,727,000. Once again, these are rough estimates in years three, four, and five, but it's the best information we have today based upon trending and our current staffing levels and what we know with our current labor contracts. So, at this point in time, the district is in excellent fiscal condition, I would say, with our $14 million fund balance that we have today. It could dwindle down a little bit by the end of the fiscal year, but, you know, we stand a good fiscal position as of today. So, are there any other questions on the forecast? Final thing I have are some donations to speak about. There's a $750 donation from Rebecca Jackson to the second-grade classroom for books. The Academic Booster Club has donated $240 for MD field trip. And the Athletic Boosters donated $3,200 for boys' basketball uniforms. The Williams Scotty Veterans Services donated an American flag and a state of Ohio flag to the district for use as well. We appreciate all of those generous donations to the district. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, outstanding questions for Rob?
I don't at this time.
If not, we'll accept a motion to approve Rob's report. So moved. Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, under old business.
Yeah, just an update on our school safety. So, again, a reminder that last month, the board approved for the students to finish on June 8th and for us to begin planning a safety day for our staff on June 11th. We've been working with the fire department, the police department, representatives from the hospital. We're gathering some community volunteers for that day. We met with Karen, myself, and Mark to finalize the layout of the schedule. In general, we're going to be doing some teaching with basic first aid for all of our staff. Reminders on the ALIS program, reminders on our school safety navigate program and how to use it. And then the second part of the day for staff will involve some live-action training. And that's when our community volunteers will be here to help us. And then at the end of the day, we're going to bring all the staff together for a question and answer with our expert panel with our fire department, police department, safety officers, so that they can ask questions. So, we appreciate the help and the cooperation we're getting from the community. And we're looking forward to this day to practice and to prepare in the event of any type of emergency within our school. So, we're very appreciative of the board for that time as well.
Great. Any questions about that upcoming June 11th, school safety?
Just thank you for working together. I think it's, I'm excited for you to have that day as well.
Think it'll be a good day.
Yes.
Yep.
Good. Okay. Under superintendent recommendations, we have lots of commendations this spring. And I'm going to try not to steal the thunder of our administrative reports later on. But I would like to point out the students who have scored 30 or higher on their ACT, and it seems like that number continues to grow. So, congratulations to those students. Congratulations to our OMEA District 1 solo and ensemble for getting a superior rating. Our Bryan Middle School treble chorus getting an excellent rating. Our a cappella choir, who got a superior rating at the state event, so not just our regional event. Congratulations to them. And again, you know, to echo what Cindy said, we had outstanding students at Fore County, Caleb Brink placed in the top 10 at the FFA district contest. Cassidy Martin, Cory Hemingway, and Zave Smith all made it to Dallas to the Business Professionals of America Conference. And Senior Sydney Schultz was student of the month in the robotics and mechanics program, which is probably going to get a chance to use some of those new pieces of equipment that are coming in. Our six-to-eight students of action for April and our high school students of action for April, which is flexibility. And then under Bryan Elementary, we have our character trait, character trait student commendations for enthusiasm. And our PBIS sportsmanship awards for being respectful, responsible, and practicing safe behavior. And then also, we always like to highlight our gold slip winners in PE for April. Max Neff, Braylee Herman, and Reese Ruffer. So, congratulations to all of those students. Administrative recommendations, again, many of these are annual action items, but we'll go through them if you have any questions. So, first of all, an approval of an MOU with the OPEC, our classified union, for sick leave. So, a few months ago, we started talking about this, that the language was different in the two contracts. So, we're proposing this change that will allow the sick leave language to be the same in both contracts. And OPEC has already approved that, so we just asked for the board's approval at this time. The OHSA membership for 2018-19 is an annual action. That's for our middle school and high school students to be able to participate in OHSA events. Approval of overnight trips for our athletic programs. Some of these are for the summer. Some of these are for next year during the school year, but we like to approve the overnight trips. We have volleyball team camp, girls' basketball team camp, the swimming state meet. We're very optimistic. And the girls' tennis team, tennis camp at Hope College. So, again, some of those in the summer and our swim next year. We have a three-year contract with Ace Digital Academy. Ace Digital provides our online school services for us, for our students to take both remediation courses and enrichment courses. We were able to lock in a better price by doing a three-year contract versus a one. So, we'll have that same price locked in for all three years. Our COMR, or Central Ohio Medical Review Service Agreement, goes hand-in-hand with our Medicaid, HPC. There's a law that says we have to have a physician referral for some of our services to qualify for Medicaid reimbursement. COMR is the company that takes care of those physician referrals for us. The NWO ESC Mentor Program for our new teachers, they have to go through a four-year mentorship. We work with the ESC. And again, that will just allow us to provide the training that those new resident educators need. And that is a program, again, that they're in for four years. The Nawaka Technical Service Agreement for 1819, this is what provides our technology and our internet and our email. And we had our tech, technology director look over that contract before sending it on to the board. The class of 2018 BHS graduates, we're excited to have our, as per the exhibit, it's posted in your Wiki, contingent upon them completing their studies is required by the city, school district, and the state of Ohio. So, we're glad to see that. And Northwest Ohio Juvenile Detention Training and Rehabilitation Center. When we have students that are housed at the juvenile detention center, they provide the education and we pay a fee for that. And that's a fee of $40 per student, per weekday for our students that are assigned to that site. So, are there any questions regarding those administrative recommendations?
If not, we'll stop there.
We'll stop there, yes.
And we will take, I will take a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations. So moved.
Second.
Deb and Mike, thank you.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under personnel recommendations, classified substitute Madison Stockman. So, this is a separate item.
I will take a motion to accept.
I may be accept that recommendation. Thank you. Deb, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Scott.
Mike.
I'm staying.
Scott.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Under certified personnel, Stephanie Ruffer as a preschool summer tutor, up to five hours a week for six weeks at tutor rate. Substitute teachers, Megan Fisher and Lisa Winsler. Classified substitutes, Alicia Brenneman and Melanie Bolus. We have a resignation from Gary Wildman as bus driver effective May 10th. Student summer workers, each summer, we hire high school, college-age students to come assist in our custodial and technology areas. And so, we're recommending Alicia Brenneman for the custodial side. Logan Cerny, Dean Spangler, and Anthony Malanga for the technology side. A one-year limited teaching contract for the 1819 school year to Alicia Bowers, middle school, high school math teacher, bachelor's level at four years' experience, and Megan Tappin, elementary music teacher, master's level at seven years' experience. We'd like to offer a two-year administrative contract to Shonda Denham Swank, school psychologist, effective August 1st, 2018. Summer Step Ahead high school teachers. Again, we offer a summer program of remediation for students who had failures in these areas. Social Studies, Amy Johnson. English, Brandon Odell. Math, Diane Ellsinger. And Science, Matt Cullen. And then we also offer a high school summer school program for students who want to work ahead in their credits. And there is a cost to this high school summer school. There's no cost for Step Ahead. Physical education in the AM, Brad Eichoff, who will be our teacher of record. Caleb Beatty. And then PM, Matt Neff. In oral communications for the first half, Brandon Odell. And the second part, Jordan Whitler. Transfer of classified personnel, Dan Hissong to PK5 server. No change in hours, just a new position, and that was effective April 30th. Lori Pointer from six-to-12 dish room to six-to-12 server. Again, no change in hours, just a new position, effective May 7th. We have a non-renewal of our spring supplemental and spring-ending extracurricular activity contracts. And again, this is an annual action, no reflection of their performance levels. And then we're going to turn around and we're going to do some of our supplemental contracts for 1819. We're going to focus on our co-curricular, extracurricular clubs and our fall sports. So, you see a lengthy list of recommendations from our elementary and high school administration and athletic director in regards to all of those fall. Again, those are fall sports and then year-long clubs or extracurricular activities. We'd like to recognize and approve our music department volunteers for the 1819 school year, as long as our athletic volunteers for fall. And our extracurricular volunteers, the programs that run with volunteer advisors, so that those programs can operate. Are there any questions regarding any of those personnel recommendations?
Diane, up on the, I lost it now. The student summer on technology.
Mm-hmm.
Are those, is that correct, Dean Spangler?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Christopher.
Right. And I just didn't know if they, I wanted to make sure that it was in there right.
Yeah.
That is a lengthy list.
It is.
Of recommendations, personal recommendations by Mrs. Savage. I will take a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott. I'll take a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Scott.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then finally, or almost finally, we have our board policy updates. So, this is our first reading. We will not take action this month. We'll take action next month. But we work with a company called Neola that provides updates for our board policies, recommended on law changes, changes in any national or federal, or federal, state, or local laws. But we also have included this month, updates on our athletic policy with the questions regarding our Hall of Fame and our dual sports. So, those proposals are in there for your review this month. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me or Eric regarding those. There's also, the academic Hall of Fame is included. Those were all local policy changes that we recommended. And then finally, there was a special update to College Credit Plus. And I'm only pointing that out because that was a late policy that just came from Neola in April. So, again, take a look at those. If you need help getting in to view those, I'll help you and show you where they're located. And I would recommend that you look through the drafts. And if you have any questions, let us know. Otherwise, you'll see these same policies next month and then we'll have a vote next month. So, nothing will get approved until you have 30 days to review them. Under points of information, oh, is there a question? Sorry.
Nope.
Okay. Under points of information, as Rob said earlier, it's kind of quiet from Columbus right now because the budget isn't going into its second year. People, I think, are waiting to kind of see what happens with the fall elections. We're going to be getting a new governor. We'll be heading into We're gonna be getting a new governor, we'll be heading into a new budget cycle. So it could be a lot of action, but right now, not so much heading into the summer. Um, Board Meeting Dates, we have our next board meeting on June eighteenth. I would also like to add that we finalized our board work session for that same date, starting at eight A M, and I believe we're gonna start at the high school, is that correct? On, on June eighteenth. So we'll add that in. L P D C meeting is to be determined, and Business Advisory Committee is to be determined.
Also, uh, excuse me, for interrupting, Diana.
No, you're fine.
The last week of June, we will have a special board meeting just to approve final appropriations for the fiscal year. Unfortunately, this year, we have a payroll the last week of June, so it delays getting the final appropriations done. But we'll, we'll maybe talk about that more next month and set a date.
Okay.
Based upon your schedules.
Okay.
And that's usually typically an A M meeting?
It's, yeah, it's very brief, just to pass final appropriation measure for the fiscal year.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Rob, for that reminder.
So before we move on to the administrators' reports, can I give, let them fight over the banner that?
Oh, yeah, you wanna do that?
Yes, may I?
Syndra has a special presentation.
Oh, boy. I happened to go to a, um, to a, to a conference and was, um, able to, to sit on, on a session. And by doing so, at the end of the session, Life Touch is the one who sponsored it. It was actually leading security improvements for your school community, sponsored by Life Touch. You sat through the whole session, not knowing this, I sat through my sessions regardless. But, um, at the end of the session, the speaker, who, I should look at my little notes there, um, was the National Sales Manager for Life Touch, who we use for our school, for our yearbook now. And, um, you could pick a free banner to have shipped to your school, made for our school. So I did that. Sure. So here's a new banner. Um, I was only allowed to get one, but V U, and it has all kinds of fabulous little sayings all over it. And they customize it for our school. So I'd like to give this to, to you to put in one of the buildings. From, from the session, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was kind of fun. Fun, fun little perk. So I will leave that. So thank you for allowing me to.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's a good reminder for our staff and our students.
V U.
V U.
It was nice of them to offer, so I took advantage. No, no cost to us. So, okay, thank you.
All right. Eric, I left you some great news to share on our spring athletics.
Hopefully I got everything you were thinking of. Uh, just to kind of go through, we, uh, actually wrapped up, uh, two sports kind of last week, and it was kind of spilling into the day, but weather dictated that. Um, softball ended up with thirteen and six record. Uh, advanced to the district tournament, we beat out by a point last Thursday in the district. Um, first team all N W L was Megan Voight, um, which is pretty solid for a sophomore.
Yeah.
Um, had a real nice season. Uh, baseball, they ended up nineteen and five, uh, if I got that right. Uh, they were also beat out Thursday, uh, over at, uh, P H, they played Walpox, who ranked number one in the state. So had a pretty good showing for this year. Um, Nate Miller, uh, sophomore catcher for us, uh, leadoff hitter was, uh, named Player of the Year in the league. Um, along with him, Zach Pittman and Zach Knows was also first team N W L. So some pretty nice seasons for some individuals, and overall team, uh, record is pretty solid. And advances to the district's always a good thing as well, so. Um, one I kind of skipped over here, junior high, uh, track, boys were N W L champs, and the girls finished fourth. So it was a pretty solid end of the season. Um, a lot of, and a lot of the spring sports were the same, but, uh, junior high track especially got cut pretty short with a lot of weather we had and stuff, but it ended up finishing the year pretty well for us. Um, track, high school track, um, we've got several, I think about fourteen kids participating in the regional down in Picklow this Thursday. Long ride for them down there and, and stuff. Um, we competed last week at the district in defiance, and the week before was the N W L. We, uh, actually set a few school records and a few, uh, meet records, uh, for the league, which is pretty neat. I think the one was, I, I always get them confused, I believe it was the four by eight. We beat the old league record, which was, it was nineteen, it's thirty-eight years old, because I'm thirty-eight years old. Uh, but they beat it by nine seconds, which was pretty out, astounding. Um, had to just beat it, but kind of shattered that, so that's kind of neat. Uh, so they'll, they'll run in the regional, and we do anticipate, or at least hope, uh, we've got some state qualifiers out of that, so we'll, we'll see how that goes, uh, on down the road. And then the last one, um, in, or, uh, team I had, uh, we've got a doubles tennis team that is actually going to state tournament this year, uh, that will go down Thursday. Uh, and then they compete Friday morning, uh, down by Cincinnati, uh, Isaac Bowers and Logan King. So they've had a real nice, uh, end of their careers, uh, and we'll get to kind of celebrate a little bit down there or whatever. Uh, so we're excited for them as well. Um, and I think the last time we've been to state tournament, the boys tennis was nineteen eighty-nine, so pretty neat for those two kids. Then the biggest one I've got, I'm most proud of probably, uh, the N W L keeps track if, if it's an N W L sport. So like tennis wouldn't qualify because not all N W L teams play that. But most of your, you know, bowling, basketball, football, uh, cross-country, all those, you acquire points throughout the year on where you place in the league. And we were fortunate enough to capture not only the boys, but also the girls, all sports. Uh, well, it'll come in banner form, and we're supposed to go pick those up for March, tomorrow, which will be kind of fun anyway, so. Um, proud of, and I think that's just a testament to the whole year being, you know, maybe we weren't the greatest in everything, but we did solid enough jobs, route, and I think it's a good sign where our programs are at, and hopefully where they're going. So it's kind of exciting stuff to end up the year.
Yeah, it's great.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Chad, Curriculum?
All right, good evening. Um, finishing up testing on Thursday, uh, with three more kids, and we're through the testing season. Um, just one stat for me, sixty-two students this year take advanced placement tests, which just, we're continuing to grow in that area. Um, the total of eighty tests, kids taking multiple tests, um, which is really great to see that. See kids challenge themselves, take some higher-level classes, and they take the test to, to see where they're at. Um, they get those, those results back in July. Um, we started some professional development for next year on curriculum materials for six to twelve English Language Arts and Math. Um, so we're excited for those and some advancements there. Um, also another thing we're, we're really excited about is we're gathering some stuff that we've ordered for this project Lead the Way, which we're offering to eighth-grade students next year. It's two modules. Um, the first module is Design and Modeling, and that's followed up by Automation and Robotics, who's the big thing. And this really comes from, we've listened to our community partners, we've listened to businesses, and we need this, a need for this. Um, whether they're gonna go on to, uh, get a degree in this, or they're gonna go to work, um, right out of high school. They need some of these skills in, in twenty-first century thinking. And, um, if we have fifteen, eighteen kids signed up right now, I think the program's gonna grow. Um, I want to get the robots out and play with them myself, or you can make claws out of them, pick up stuff. I think when eighth graders see this, they're gonna say, I want to do this. And the seventh graders next year are gonna say, hey, the eighth grader, don't be a part of this. Um, it's kind of exciting, exciting stuff.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen?
I wanted to touch on a little bit with Syndra and Chad. We have a, um, a, a trial of an after-school program in our maker spaces for coding, um, robotics. And I happened to go into one of them today and sat down with one of our groups to actually code. And it was amazing, for around forty-five minutes straight, our students, there were probably thirty of them, were engaged and involved in this activity. So it was really neat to see, it was, it was just the, the technology piece. So we have a lot going on in a short amount of time, so I'll try to touch on everything here. We celebrated Arbor Day on, um, April twenty-seventh with the Toledo Zoo. Um, I wanted to give a big shout out to the Bryan Tree Commission, Williams County Soil and Water, and the Water Conservation District, as they bagged nine hundred seedlings to give to all of our students. So every student, um, kindergarten through fifth grade received a, um, Norway spruce. So they talked about the importance of trees, the Toledo Zoo came, talked about the importance of, um, trees with animals. Um, so that was great that, that we were able to be involved in that. Um, May seventh through the eleventh, again, was Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to the board for coming out and, um, celebrating, talking with our teachers, enjoying breakfast. Um, also wanted to thank our community, our community put on a luncheon, not only at the elementary school, but also at our high school. So thank you to those who provided food for the, for the teachers, they greatly appreciated it. Um, on May twenty-third, our PBIS team is meeting to talk about how things went this year, things that we can do for next year. We are looking for a parent partner to part, partner with us. Um, we did have a parent partner, but then she became part of our committee when we hired her as our school social worker. So we are looking for a parent partner, um, for our PBIS committee. Um, you'll hear me talk about PBIS school age and PBIS preschool. Um, this year, we were a pilot program for our preschool. So our teachers were trained a little bit this year, our preschool teachers were trained. And then next year, um, again, they're gonna be that pilot and finish up their training so they can implement PBIS in the preschool. Um, time, it's that time of year where we're, we're doing field trips, we have a lot of grade levels. We are doing some of our community visits with our fire department and our courthouse. Um, we have our inflatable obstacle course that was rescheduled for Sunday, June third, from two to five at the ice rink, it was canceled due to weather earlier. So that's June third, so we look forward to having, um, that is the annual P T O fundraiser. We look forward to seeing our, our students there. Um, something that our, um, third through fifth grade principal, Mrs. Thor Meyer, and our guidance counselor have looked into this year, um, something they'd like to implement for next year is our fifth grade ambassador program. That consists of students representing our school in a positive way, being responsible, being respectful, and being safe. They will help with such items as helping build routines, they're familiar with the building, they can help the younger grade levels, um, greeting students in the morning, holding open the doors, and serving as a mentor for our younger students. So we're excited, excited to start that next year. We do have preschool graduation, May thirty-first, and then we have our field days after that in June. Um, there was a weekly bulletin that was sent out, excuse me, monthly bulletin that was sent out to parents. Um, all of our info regarding field day and preschool graduation and times can all be found on social media and on that, um, flyer that went home. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ray?
All right, much like the elementary and athletics, all around, it's busy, busy, busy. At our levels as well, um, like Mrs. Cox said, it's a month of celebration. Really, as we get towards the end here, the final push, the final three weeks of school. So again, thank you, uh, for recognizing our staff and all they do. Uh, we appreciate that, uh, what, what you guys did for us last week. And, uh, because of our amazing staff, I have a whole slew of nice, um, recommendations, um, for our students to kind of go through here. So I'll just start with, as we noted earlier, our four-county seniors get recognized tomorrow during Senior Recognition Day, along with our students who attend C B I, so congratulations to them and their futures. Uh, we've had our awards nights. They started last week with our senior scholarship night, and we awarded over two million dollars in scholarships. Um, so congratulations to all those seniors preparing for that next chapter in life. And then tomorrow night, we're having our Academic Booster Club Awards Night at the A and E Building at seven o'clock. So we're gonna hand out well over two hundred fifty awards there as well for all of our students and their many accomplishments in grades nine through twelve. See, we had our fifth graders joined us, uh, the class of two thousand twenty-five, if you can think that far ahead. Our fifth graders joined us in our building, and they toured, um, anywhere from the cafeteria to the courtyard to the gym, to the upstairs sixth-grade wing, um, to the offices and the art rooms, and they just got a little glimpse, a little glimpse of what they're walking into next year, so they were very excited, lots of energy. And we hope they have that same excitement on the first day of school, so we're looking forward to it. So thanks to the elementary for bringing all of the little ones over. I can't even call them little ones anymore because they're, welcome to the big leagues, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that was fun. So we also have our concerts, um, Concert Seasons is about in action. We had our band concert and our choir concert just yesterday, and we have our orchestra concert. Middle School's happening right now as we speak, and then the high school side of that, um, this Thursday. So again, our seniors in those programs, kudos to them for all, all that they have done. And I know they're recipients of many awards on, at their final concerts. Um, our eighth graders are getting ready for Chicago, so they're gonna be going to Navy Pier and Lincoln Park, Lincoln Park Zoo, uh, the Museum of Science and Technology, um, just to name a few places, so they're looking forward to that. That is just after the Memorial Day weekend, they're gonna be heading out, uh, May thirty-first and June first, that Thursday and Friday. So they are looking forward to that trip. And then the big day is approaching with graduation on Sunday, June tenth. So leading up to that, our seniors have their graduation practice on Tuesday, June fifth. That is their final day in our building. So what we do for them is after practice, around eleven fifteen, eleven thirty-ish, depending on how fast practice goes, is we do a clap-out for them. And basically, it's a one-last hurrah for them. They get to walk the halls, all of the student body comes down to the first floor, and they walk the entire first floor. And the current students, um, cheer them on and give them wishes of, of good luck. And then they end up in the courtyard for a cookout, and parents and family members and friends are welcome to stay and attend. So we're hoping for beautiful weather, um, and that's quickly approaching. So between that day and graduation, we have our exams. So grades, well, eight through eleven will be taking exams on June sixth, seventh, and eighth. And that will then take us to the end of the school year. So it's vastly, or quickly approaching. And then we have summer school that starts June twelfth, and it just continues right, right on through, so. Uh, one, just one last thing, as Mr. Bass has known, we are, um, excited. Although we have all of that going on, we're also preparing for the eighteen nineteen school year. And our teachers are starting to get curriculums in place, um, planning in place. We're excited, we have career tech education pathways that are on the horizon and gonna be starting next school year. So as Mr. Bass has known, and those twenty-first century skills, those critical thinking skills, those, uh, skills that force you to apply. We have courses ranging from grade six with our STEAM class, which is art and tech combined, all the way up through our Career Connections class, our sophomore year, and then continuing with our internships, our junior year, senior year. So we're really excited for that, our teachers are preparing to pave the way, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Um, any questions for our administrators? Okay.
A lot of good things going on in the district.
Wrapping up fast. Well, I am, am aware that we do need a quick executive session for, A, the Appointment, Employment, Dismissal, Discipline, Promotion, Demotion, Compensation of Employee, and the Investigation, Charge, and Complaints Against an Employee Official License, licensee or student, as well as be the purchase of property of public purposes or for the sale of property for competitive bidding. I do not anticipate any action, um, this evening at all. And, um, with that being said, I will take a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Syndra?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
I would like to say thank you for those who are watching this on V M U, and thank you, administrators, for being here this evening and giving your reports.
Thank you very much.
Yep.